First responder certifications, which opens up opportunities. But essentially it puts Ely in the center of making people's lives better and giving them career development choices. We're not the first ones to think about this. There's a school in Colorado that is working right now to develop a program like this. There's also a school in Benville, Arkansas, which is now the destination for mountain biking in the world. Walmart money is behind them. So you know when you've got these other places that are already established as destinations working towards this training program. We've got letters of support from trail crews in Utah, in California, throughout Nevada. They're saying if there were graduates of this program, we would hire them right now at twenty dollars an hour and we would still meet more people. And so with Great Basin College focusing, and I think properly in workforce development, this would be another one of those workforce development programs that would bring people to Ely, use our mountains as a classroom, and essentially put us in the center of their lives in, you know, being a big significance in these trail building projects throughout the West. And so we've got letters of support from all different organizations, the Shoshone Tribe, and we're pretty much asking for the city of Ely to write a letter of support to the EDA, which is who we're applying for this grant from, to help us plan and develop this course, to convince them to go ahead and approve that. All in favor of motion on this section?
For approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it goes over. As always, thank you all for your support.
Thank you, pal.
Item five, Councilman Orr's Discussion for Possible Action, Six Month Performance Evaluation of City Fire Chief Pat Stork, including but not limited to consideration of character, legumes comic, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible actions includes, but is not limited to termination, suspension of motion, rejection and reduction in pay, recommend promotion, endorsement, engagement, retention, or no action, I believe, determining as a statement here on this.
Yes, and I got some questions regarding whether this should be open or closed as far as the meeting. And so Section eight point zero three of the Open Meeting Law Manual indicates when closed sessions may not be held. And it's for these exact situations. So this is a six-month review and it is for an appointed public officer. And so in discussing his ability to serve as an appointed public officer, those are held open. But if we were to get anything outside of his job description, then it would be closed. So we'll keep this within the job description, his service as an appointed official. And that's why it's turned on open meeting.
You're on the other side of the picket line now, Pat.
Aye. Okay, so that gets the author of this right here. First of all, I can make a disclosure that I'm a past thirty-six-year member of the Ely Fire Department. I went into active in November of two thousand nineteen, and I probably won hundreds of calls from Pat, hundreds of them. And I still have a licensed EMT for the state of Nevada. So I think I can do this here with no bias, one way or the other, you know. If I could start off, just give a little preliminary.
Can I jump in there too, Jim? Can I jump? I'd like to disclose too that Pat Stork's a great friend of mine for the last twenty years, but this doesn't have an effect on my decision.
Okay, this is the first time we've ever had this with a fire chief. And it goes back to June of nineteen when the mayor, very good notice of interview, had a job description for a fire chief. The volunteers basically hired the fire chief for the city of Ely for over a hundred and some years. So anyway, that started this process, the job description was wrote, we had group input in on the deal, and then the fire chief at that time became male, Pat went in and filled that position for four and a half months. So then in August thirteenth, we had the interview for Pat, discussion and so forth. And prior, before, I think it was in July, we had a list of questions. It was a closed session for the operation of the fire department and the volunteers, which was well attended, trying to get, to make sure, because this again, we went into new waters of having a different, a job description for the fire chief. So the mayor during that, back in August thirteenth, you know, he asked up a question, you know, how does Pat feel about making policies and procedures? He said he's already started doing policies and revisions, you know, and the mayor asked plans on working and supporting the volunteer fire department. Pat says he's working on scheduling every week. And that's down to September and so forth. And we went through, there's a whole gamut of items. We wanted Pat to come back, we mentioned to him, in six months, come back, which is my fault to shut it up in February. So we're off two weeks. And, you know, doing evaluation of what we were asking of his new job description. So that's what this evaluation is, you know, the wording on that makes sound like, oh my God, you know, the guy's gonna get thrown in the sharks, you know. So that's, and a lot of people, I received several calls, you know, it says, you gotta understand the law. So that's what this was about. So, you know, I've got a few comments to make on this right here, and I welcome other comments too, you know, so if I've got the mic yet, I'll start. You know, when we offered Pat the pay range was fifty-five to eighty-five, we offered him eighty thousand to start with, you know, and he agreed with that right there. With a six-month review of what we're doing right here, the mayor asked, that's not okay? Pat said yes. So the review is, you know, some of the things I wanted to follow up on was the EMS billing. And it's good, I've checked with the treasurer, the sharp billing company. Unfortunately, it's still thirty-five percent of what we usually get back, but there's a lot of money. We went into another area on billing, was a motor vehicle accident. I've talked with Pat, I think you can elaborate a little more on that because of your reports. And if you could splash on that for a second, that's a lot of money.
So basically what happened when we did the motor vehicle accident billings, the billing company had some confusion with the way things were done. And we've since got back with the billing company and I've kept kind of keeping a loop of what was going on with the conversation with them. We've just had the billing company go back and resubmit all of these claims. Also during this transition, we had a backlog of payments that needed to go to the collections company. So here, just in the last month, we turned approximately sixty-six thousand dollars over the collections company. So hopefully we can start recouping some of that. I do have some information I need to give with the attorney on. The billing company did tell us one of the things we should do is add in our language when people sign on the bottom of the tablet that shows all the services that we're doing that should they not pay the bill and they do end up in collections, that there's a thirty percent fee added on to their bill, which basically is what the billing, the collections company charges, so we can recoup some of our revenue if we do. So all of that's been working pretty smooth. Hoping to get some feedback in the near future. They've just, in the last two weeks, resubmitted all this billing and kind of go back into all these auto accidents.
During Pat's term here also, we've started the new, due to the contract with county, an EMS program. And I believe we now have a first female firefighter EMT in the city. That was another milestone, which is working out well. And like I said earlier, you know, we're getting people wanting to apply for these jobs before we couldn't get nothing, you know. But right at the head of my, on my notes I made on August thirteenth was big, outlined that volunteers need to become more active in the department. Everybody knows, for example, there's only, throw out the career guys, there's nineteen volunteers. We have allowed forty-five. Back in our era, you had a waiting list. Volunteerism was down. I know the fire chief, the paid staff are doing their best, trying to lift the spirit up, whatever. I really think the volunteers need to take a lead in this.
Yeah, we've had discussions on this. We actually did just get another new member here two weeks ago. One of the gentlemen that works at the mine from Poland that was on the mine rescue stuff over there has joined up. He'd been active and participating in training. So they've been reaching out, we've been reaching out. It's just, like you said, volunteerism's down, I mean, everywhere. You look at, you know, back in the day, you had the J C, you had all of those organizations that were super strong, and it's just, people just, I don't know, it's just, it's nationwide is a problem, you know, and we're still, still working, think that all the people that we do got are, you know, pretty active, and so we got good turnout. But, you know, there is some of the guys that are, you know, getting older too, so we need that new, younger blood to replace them.
I think that's a task, you know, he comes on, but I still think, you know, you need to promote the president of volunteers to keep reaching out, because we got a lot of mines around here that have minor rescue teams. Those guys are trained, they want to come in and start their work at different shifts. But when I'm hearing all the calls, you've had some real grinders, big fires, again, I haven't been for the bar, bar fire department, it could have been real ugly. But I have to also comment, I don't think you missed a call.
I made it.
You know, at all, taking on this, this new role, I mean, which is really important. And so I just, I got only one other thing that comment on is, and I'll turn it over to the other people, is what do you feel is the, is the long-term forecast for our volunteer fire department? I like, we got now eight career people, they're going on a lot of calls. We have, I think we're probably only three traveled still, the rest of them are in town. And again, you know, Elko, City Elko is way bigger than Ely, but they went from Lee Engine Company, like our volunteer fire department, to a career staff. Lee Engine Company gets called now for a dumpster fire or brush fire. I really want to make sure our volunteer fire department can stay strong and not be, and I don't say this in a mean way, overrun by the career staff. We need the volunteers, but again, the volunteers themselves have to help themselves. They can't rely on your staff with the training. I mean, we've said the guys gotta do the training, you mentioned it, it'll be a weekly posted training. But again, I know, you said you have seven trainings during the month. Trust me, I know the trainings don't get well attended. It's hard, so I'm asking.
It's getting better. I did, I did this just last week, sent a schedule to Chief North, because I don't think all of the information is getting out of the department. So we do have a training schedule put together from now all the way through the end of June, through the first part of July, actually, the last week of June. And so I typed that up on an actual letter, I sent it to Brett, I said, we need to make sure this is getting distributed to the other departments and see if you can page it out on our thing. So they did do that the other day. We're getting more attendance from Long Island. Our attendance is, is back and forth, you know, it just depend, you know, and hoping when the weather gets warmer and we do a lot more outdoor stuff, we'll get better attendance, you know.
Good to know, I haven't wondered anybody else.
I couldn't pass it up. Actually, I've really been impressed with Pat, you know, before we hired you, I met a couple of volunteers, I asked them one question because you were right for a hundred and something years, the volunteer basically brought their, their fire chief candidate to the city and that's who became the fire chief. I know, because that was one of my dads, was a long time's fire chief here. Pat, when I talked to several of your volunteers, every one of them gave you the best review you can imagine. That took all of, that would offer my, offer my mind about, you know, the stuff that you probably, what I'm talking about, but what I can all say is that I've helped the department a few times. And I've been totally impressed with the job you've done. And I'd like to report, you know, a new truck, hallelujah. I didn't like the fact you were running around in your own personal vehicle at two o'clock in the morning, you go try to find something in your, for the fire team. So I'm very pleased with this, and you know, that's all I want to say, is thank you for a great job. I love your report, you know, and it may serve in your department that I know of. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd just like to say you're doing a great job and thanks for moving the department in a positive direction.
Well, all I gotta say is I watched you yesterday, it seems, I understood you were doing quite a job there. I liked how I supported you all the way.
I hope it wasn't needing.
What?
It wasn't needing, was it? Two calls there back to back with one about, um, what lunch going on?
Yeah, cultural change in a department is a hard thing, and I know you've kind of tackled it head on, and it's, it's gonna take some while still, yeah, but we appreciate the effort and I think the council will place with the results so far, so. Anything else? Anything you'd like to add?
I mean, I get raped?
Yeah, that is funny.
Well, I can report on the financial side of Pat, that he's very, very conscious of his budget, and he has been doing an excellent job at that to stay within the budget that got cut last year, so I'll give him a big kudos on that.
Well, just during this evaluation, we have, I probably have to ask the council, the last thing, no action or no action. So could, couldn't we make a, you know, it sounds like from the consensus of the council, he's doing a great job, because the evaluation that was supposed to be done in six months was to evaluate his performance that we asked him to do. So if that's, you know, if we wanted to entertain a pay increase based on his first six-month evaluation, is that now or we do bring it up, bring it up at another time?
That could be done now. And so language, it sounds like it went well, the language makes it look like it was gonna be a rough evening, but this is pulled directly from the open meeting manual. I don't love the language, Jennifer and I talked a lot about it, it's just the language we have to use. But what it does, it gives almost unlimited options. Yeah, it gives many options, so promotion is included in there, and I would read that as allowing a raise. And so it is on a discussion for possible action, and that last sentence says, no action, we could take no action on it. So it really gives broad discretion on what action or not action is taken tonight.
Okay, I'd like to throw out there the approval of his performance is satisfactory. And at this time, we get, I don't know, the shelves blaze on for the fire department, but we need to consider an increase for his performance. It appears to keep going with further reviews as the increase, to work with the financial lady, I might can tell, with X amount of money, but I think that an increase is warranted. And, you know, there's still a range of five thousand dollars where he is, from eighty thousand to eighty-five. So I don't know how the budget actually works all that much. So I'd like to consider a raise for him, but bring it up at the next meeting.
You told, did put it out? I'm sorry, put it out?
Yeah, yeah, for the percentage amount.
Was that a motion?
No, that's a motion. That was a motion, too.
Do it in a second to that.
The next agenda to consider percentage raise, consulting with the finance lady, based on this, no doubt. Excellent review.
There's not a lot of room there to percentage wise, to work out the ladder. You're only talking about five thousand dollars on the table there, really?
I mean, even if they were considering this, what we were talking about, in general, three percent raise, to make sure that we're still just moving people along, I don't think would be in order.
Finally, I just, I think a raise is warranted. I still like the motivation, getting, money's a motivator, there's no doubt about it, you know. And I was actually disappointed there wasn't some of your staff here to pack you up, I expected Donnie Book, you know, because, so pleasure of the, I really believe there's a decrease is warranted, but again, I think we need to run it through the finance lady on what we can sort of.
So we have a motion for a satisfactory report to be filed and a recommendation for a raised amount to be determined at the next meeting.
Maybe the finance lady to come up and just ask a question, simple math. Okay, so eight times three, three percent, or twenty-four hundred. That's pretty hard. How does your budget work without a five? You know, that's four thousand.
It's a large amount, I think it's something that we could work with, yes.
Okay.
So would you like to make your motion, I don't know if you'd like that happen?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to go to the full five thousand dollars, up to his maximum, eighty-five. Okay?
We're gonna do this.
Is that acceptable, Matt Trager?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
With the fact you still might get another review.
Well, and then annual review is actually in the code now, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so doing this annually for all of our elected or appointed city officials? Elected officials get reviewed every four years, you get reviewed every year, so. Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm the second from Councilman Spear. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
I want to thank you, Ed, and like I said, our open door policy, if anybody's got any questions, the mayor's attended, some of my staff meetings, I've been holding off on this next one, so we, hopefully get the other member here and, and trouble policies that are in place, and then let's stop by and look at those or whatever.
You're always in a meeting.
Now.
Thank you. I know, I'm a buddy. Good job. I will turn the gamble over to Mayor Pro Pro Kim, I'll lift for this next item six.
Okay, for approval of the third amendment to develop an agreement between the city of Ely and the Ladder Order Railway Foundation Incorporated, extending the term of agreement to October first, two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve. Second?
Second.
Motion and the second, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passed, turn back to the mayor.
Item seven, council members, city treasurer, trash, discussion for possible action, review of proposals received for certified public accounting services to complete the city of Ely's fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three audits with possible acceptance of a proposal. Proposals under consideration are Hintonburg CPAs and advisors, and Kettington and Christiansen LLC.
Well, I can verify, because I worked with both entities, so they're very professional, and they both would do a good job. So I guess it comes down to money, which would be with Kennington put out. And they are the ones that we have been, have done the audit for the last five, six years.
Look, I'd like to have a stake with Pennington.
What's that?
I was moved to that we hired Pennington, because it's a ten thousand dollar debt, and after you, if you look, you know, nineteen thousand, two ninety-five against his twenty-eight thousand, but then this increase is constantly going up, so I'm a bit, I'm a bit, but anyway, I'd like to recommend that we hire the firm of Kennington, Gary Pennington and his partner with, what is it, Pennington and Christiansen?
So we have a motion from Councilman Spear for the acceptance of the proposal from Kettington and Christiansen. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Fungus, any further discussion?
I don't, Matt Trager, so as you deal with the entities, have you dealt with K and C?
Yes, yeah, they, like I said, the last two years, well, I've gone through two since I did that one, let's go around, and they're, they're both competent, and they've, both entities, and they're great to work with either one of them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous for Kettington. Item eight, council members, city fire chief Stork, discussion for possible action, approval of cooperative fire protection agreement between the city of Ely fire department and the USDI Bureau of Land Management Ely District.
You got a copy of the contract, this is pretty standard of what they do. We do these contracts for five years at a time. Some of their pricing has changed a little bit, but this is all set by federal, federal rate of what they pay and stuff. Mutual agreement with us, first twenty-four hours is free, so we do initial attack with them on fires. If we do get called back later to say, hey, take an engine out and help again the following day or something, we can bill for that and get reimbursed. So it's pretty much a standard contract that we've had in place before that we did renew every five years.
We just figure you could actually bill at your actual costs?
You can try to negotiate that with them, but most of their rates are kind of built in at the federal base scale, as you see in the contract that they have set up. If you have actual.
What it says, it's on your bill, bill rates will be actual costs are made different from the rates quoted in this document, which means I think you can bill like your hourly rate instead of this twenty-five bucks.
Right, for like certain people you can, and like they go through and they'll, you know, typical thing, they'll try to negotiate with you, so. We haven't really ran into that with them, because we try to, try to basically just do that initial attack with them and help out, and then when they get their resources on scene, we come back and do our main job, which is, you know, protect the city, so they got a lot of federal firefighters that do this stuff out in the wildland, so we don't go do a lot of that, there is money to be made at it, and it's something I've talked to Genev about possibly pursuing in the future of, you know, we can generate enough revenue on the guys who are on the off shift, pay them overtime, to go save around the engine within our district, and build and make some revenue at it. But on the same hand, I do not want to deplete our resources protecting the city, which are our main interest.
Any other questions on this section?
Have we moved to approve this item?
Motion to approve from Councilman Spear, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item eight, council members, city fire chief, Stork, discussion for possible action, approval of cooperative fire protection agreement between the city of Ely fire department and the, did I just do that one? And then moving on to that one, sorry.
We're selling some tires.
Oh my gosh, we're selling some tires. City council members, sorry, city fire chief, Stork, discussion for possible action, approval for city fire chief to seek individuals who may be interested in purchasing engine sevens, eight tires and rims previously advertised.
So where that's, where did we, you can go ask somebody?
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, we've already advertised this in the paper, it's actually went out, nobody bid on it. I just don't think a whole lot of people that might use this re-digital paper and relook advertising. So I encourage any of you that, if you know anybody that might build any of those types of tires, you know, a lot of the ranchers have older water trucks, they're little ten hundred twenty tires, they're going away from those, but I know there's several that probably rancher in the community that would probably be able to use them, and I'd rather be able to get a little bit of money out of them rather than just haul them up to the landfill, so.
And this gives you the latitude to just work a price and get rid of.
Well, I would definitely probably bring the price back before the board, but at least kind of find some interested people that might want to buy them.
And so he can bring back the.
Wouldn't make your direction on that.
Yeah, so he would, he would be able, so right now, we put it out, but, I mean, the next step would potentially be just to trash them. And so this is just seeking out individuals, I guess, requests for proposals, and go out and say, would you be interested specifically, would you be interested? And then he would bring that back, and the decision would be with you to, who to sell them to him, it would be the highest bidder.
What, as previously advertised, two hundred bucks for all eight tires and wheels, if you have somebody come in, throw down two Franklin's, you'll be happy with that?
Well, they could come in with a proposal for anything. If he can't find anybody, and someone says, hey, look, I'll come and pick them up and haul them off for you, or I'll give you ten bucks a tire, I don't know. We would have to, you guys would have your side. You guys would have your side.
Legal doesn't know how to do that.
So, yeah, basically he'd ask them if you can seek proposals.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
For move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Don't be shy. All right, I assume that's unanimous, thank you. Item ten, council members, city attorney man, early discussion, only review of research findings in connection with previous city council actions to draft ordinances making the tree board and animal control advisory board clerk appointed committees.
So I was asked, it was a couple of council meetings ago, to review the potential of making the tree board and animal control advisory board, pulling them out of open meeting law requirements. The concern was the expense associated with it, the lack of staff to be able to comply with the rigorous open meeting law requirements. And so as I researched that potential of making them clerk appointed committees, I started with the ordinances that created them, and they were created and specifically organized to operate under open meeting law. And I think it is appropriate, my recommendation would be that they continue to work under open meeting law, and that's because they would be public bodies. They expend or disperse taxpayer revenues, or they advise us or give recommendations to our board on the expending or dispersment of taxpayer revenue. So I think it's important that they stay under the open meeting law. There would be other potential options, as long as they're functioning under the city, the open meeting law requires. But if they were to have individuals of that organization seek out to become a nonprofit or another type of group that handles the tree board or animal control issues, I know other areas have nonprofit shelters that deal with all the animal control issues and contracted with the city. But that's something that they could look into if the open meeting law requirements are too rigorous. But my recommendation would be that they not be, there be no ordinance draft changes. I do think they need to function under open meeting law if they're functioning in their current capacity.
Okay, anything else or questions or discussions for the board on this?
Says it all, bud.
I think it does. With that, we'll move on to item eleven, public comment. Please state your name for the record, and we will have to.